Okay, I think we're going to start the cameras rolling, folks. Well, welcome everyone to the June 17th, 2020. Meeting for the Newbury Planning Board. I'm going to read some opening comments just as we need to do this. So as a preliminary matter, this is Pete Pecos, Chair of the Newbury Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. And I'd like to also welcome Leslie and Woody again onto our board with with successful election results, as well as Mary continuing on board as our associate member. With that said, George Morse, would you please acknowledge?
Yes.
Thank you. Larry Murphy.
Yes.
Leslie Matthews.
Yes.
Woody Knight.
Yeah. Did you hear me?
No.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir. And Mary Stone.
Yes.
Wonderful staff. When I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Martha Taylor.
Yes.
Emily Noble.
Yes.
All right, anticipated speakers on the agenda. Please respond in the affirmative. John Colentino for Triple Q.
Okay, he's going to have to unmute himself.
Okay.
John, can you unmute yourself for a second? Please. Anyway, he is here.
President, President John Colentino. Thank you, John. And Bill Manuel for Wetlands and Land Management, Inc. You'll probably need to unmute yourself as well.
Yeah, he's he's connecting to audio right now.
Okay. And I'll come back to Bill in a second. Thad Barry of ASB Design Group. You could unmute yourself and just acknowledge that you can be heard.
Mr. Chair, John Colentino, Thad Barry, and Bill Manuel will be in the same room.
Okay.
Talking and Billy is signing in right now.
Okay, beautiful. So wait a sec, just to make sure that they can participate. So Bill or Ted, when you're able, if you could just acknowledge it, you can respond. Yeah. Hello, Bill Manuel is here. Wonderful. And Ted is with Ted is with you as well, I understand, right?
Yes.
Beautiful. Okay, great. So good evening. This is the June 17th, 2020 open meeting of the Newbury Planning Board. It's being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of coronavirus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, governor's orders supersede the requirements of the open meeting law that all meetings in publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order which can be found posted within with the agenda materials for this meeting allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely, so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so the public can follow along with the deliberation of the meeting. For this meeting, the Newbury Planning Board is convening by video conference via Zoom as posted in the planning board's agenda, which can be found on the planning board section of the town's website, in which identifies how the public may join. You may join us by going to http backslash backslash zoom.us and entering meeting code number ID 83839871364. Again, that number is 83839871364 or by calling 19292056099. Again, that number is 9292056099 and entering the meeting ID number that was just given. Okay, please note that this meeting is being recorded and that attendees are participating by video or telephone conference. The materials were provided to the board members prior to the meeting for review. Applicants or their representatives may be called upon to speak and if needed, share information to the screen. Please state the intention after you have been called. So we're going to have some ground rules, just so everyone understands. Before we turn to the first item on the agenda, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After speakers conclude their remarks, I will go down the list of members invited each member to provide any comments, questions, emotions. Please hold your name until called. For all attendees except board members and staff, please remember to mute your phone. That would be star six to toggle mute or unmute on your computer, the mute or unmute button when you're when you're not speaking. Use earbuds or earphones or tablets on cell phones. Please remember to speak clearly. I'll try to remember that at all times and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. Please be aware that the video participants can see you and that you should take care not to share screen your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captioned for the recording. For responses, please wait to be acknowledged and then please give your name before speaking. If board members wish to engage in any discussion, please go through the chair. With regards to public comment site, there will be an opportunity for public comments and questions during our public hearing. After the board members have spoken, I will offer the opportunity for public comments. And basically, how this will work is board members will then ask questions in the public comment section. We will then open that up. I will see questions through the raise hand function for video conference participants. This function may be accessed by clicking on the participant option listed in the menu below the photo gallery. You would hover your cursor over this area if you don't see it, window will open and then you would display on the right. On the bottom of the participants area, you will see a list of phone slash video participants. And on the bottom, you will see the ability to click on the button to raise your hand. Please ensure that your name is displayed. You may rename yourself by using more functions next to your name. You can list your name, your address, and then your question. Telephone participants, you can you can use your phone keypad while on Zoom, raising your hand by hitting star nine. I will then see questions from the public that have hit the raised hand button in order which they have listed. The system lists the order whoever hits the button for the raised button first. Participants will be called on to identify their name and address and their question. I will afford the applicant participant or and or his representative the opportunity reply. Your handle will be lowered when you have been given the floor for your question. The board will continue down the list of those with the raised hand column and again, afford participants and representatives an opportunity to speak. Should there be any be a physical electronic submitted questions or concerns, they will be read. For the record, the participants reps will afford the opportunity to speak if the issue or if the issues are not raised. And if there's any difficulty and for some reason you can't operate operate the raise function, if you can just raise your hand, we'll keep an eye on the visual screen. Finally, each vote taken in this medium will be conducted by roll call vote. And my co-chair will make sure that I'm being reminded of that. All agenda items will be handed in the same manner. Note, on the pre-echo, we're going to turn to our agenda and go from there. Okay, I'm going to minimize that. Bear with me, folks, as I do that. And I'm going to open up our agenda so that I can see that. And with regards to our agenda, our first item on the agenda is going to be a public hearing, a continued public hearing notice for zoning amendments proposed by citizens petition for change to Parker River Residential District continued from May 20th, 2020.
And we have to wait for three minutes before we can open that.
Okay, I'm sorry, I sped through that too quickly. I did, and we can't really do any public hearings, so we have to wait. During the three minute opportunity, I think our old business would probably take a little bit too long. Martha, did you want to touch on anything on the town planners report or?
Let's see, well, just a few things. I guess we are still, as everybody knows, staff is in the building. We have not had any word yet on when the building will open to the public. And I think, as I said before, it will be open to the public by appointment only at first. So for the time being, for the foreseeable future, I think we will continue to be operating with remote meetings and working from there. So as soon as I know anything different, I will let you all know.
All right. So we're still kind of under the governor's state of emergency.
Right, we've got no indication when that state of emergency will be lifted. So we are still under under the legislation that was passed, Chapter 53 of the Acts of 2020 in terms of applications and any deadlines are all still still told.
Okay. All right. And I think, as we know, we're going to try to slowly negotiate our way through business in this remote manner with everyone's cooperation and patience. So that's good. We have two minutes. Les, do you want to do any a quick little presentation on the board selection?
Um, I think it's going to take, might take me a little longer, but let's see, they went over grants, gifts and donation and accepted those vote to accept council and aging donation from central congregation, review and approve new 2020 business licenses. And there was a discussion for contact con- the company that's doing the police station is going to do a quick presentation for what they've come up with for town hall renovations is how they're describing it. Ellen Jameson is stepping down. Julie O'Brien, who was the secretary for DPW, has taken her place. Liquor licenses are being amended for outdoor activity for the COVID reasons. And they went through the board's selectmen's summer schedule, of course, July 4th falls on a Tuesday, and that would have been it. So that's not going to happen. It's August through September. They approved the limited amount of BOs schedule unless there are meetings that would come up that would have to back into the to be present. All meeting updates have been approved from May 26 through June 2018. And then we went back to through December 2017. And then the warrants were signed by the chair or vice chair or whoever was present that evening.
Thank you. That was perfect, Leslie. Thank you. I'm going to ask folks that are going to be speaking tonight to mute themselves until they're asked to actually speak, just so we can keep down on background noise. So if you can take that opportunity just to mute yourself. Okay. So we've entered into our time with starting public hearings. My first will be a continued public hearing zoning amendments proposed by citizens petition for change for Park River residential district, which was continued from May 20th, 2020, minimum finished areas and boundaries of district. Martha, do you want to touch on this before we open?
Yes. So as as you may recall, when the public hearing opened, Michelle O'Gerry said at the time that they were planning to withdraw the citizens petition. And they subsequently did that in the beginning, excuse me, in the beginning of May. We got, I think we got signatures on all three petitions from all of the signatories except for one, requesting that they be withdrawn. I scanned and emailed them all over to town council, who deemed them sufficient for withdrawal. So they were officially withdrawn and they are not on the warrant for the springtime meeting. So essentially, there is there is at this point, nothing to nothing to hear, just to recap what they were. One was a limitation on the square footage of any any dwellings built in the Parker River Residential District. And the other was were two two different ways of expanding the the boundaries of the district. So those were all withdrawn.
Okay, so those were withdrawn and they don't require any action on our part. Is that correct?
I would say so. I think the appropriate thing to do would be to close the hearing. And then, I don't know, Larry, what do you think of a vote of no action?
And that seems to me to make sense. I don't know at this point that it much matters, but we certainly want to close the public hearing, and I would so move.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Right. Is there any discussion on the motion? Okay, on the motion, Larry, how say you?
Yes.
Okay, George, how say you?
Yes.
Great. Leslie, how to say you?
Yes.
And Woody, how say you?
Yeah.
Wonderful. And Mary, your opinion?
Yes.
Thank you. And the chair also agrees. Yes. All right, moving along on our agenda, we have a continued public hearing, zoning amendments proposed by planning board continued from May 20th, 2020, with regards to lot widths, driveway widths and setbacks, wireless communications. Martha, do you want to have any opening comments on this one?
Um, I'll have a few on the learning as well. So these these again, because we were unable to hold the public hearing before the warrant was actually set at this point, they're not on the warrant. It's kind of a moot moot point at this time. I think that if we if we try to continue, we may well fall outside of the required statutory deadlines under Mass General Law for passage of zoning amendments. And it it seems like it might be beneficial to revisit some of these amendments in any case and aim for putting them back before town town meeting. So.
Larry, did you want to add something to that?
No, I think Martha covered it pretty well. You know, we really haven't had an opportunity to publicly vet these things. And, you know, I've seen a few things that are causing me to perhaps take a different view on some of these. I don't want to get into that tonight, but and obviously, we're not on the warrant for the town meeting. So I think the best thing to do is just close the hearing and withdraw them.
Okay. And would you like to make that motion, sir?
I would move to close public hearing.
Thank you. Second.
Second.
Wonderful. Thank you. Okay, any discussion? Okay, then on the motion, Larry, how would you vote?
Yes.
Wonderful. George, how would you vote?
Yes.
Wonderful. Leslie?
Yes.
Great. And Woody?
Yes.
And Mary, your opinion?
Yes.
Wonderful. And the chair would also agree. So we will we will close that. Okay, continuing on our agenda, we have a public hearing, proposed amendments to site plan review submission requirements and procedures to meet year two of MS for general permit requirements. And this will require an opening statement. Is that correct, Martha?
Oh, yes. So the public hearing notice needs to be read for this one. So do you do you have it handy?
Um, which one is it? The 68 Green Street Golf Center?
No, it's the the site plan review. So if you want.
Well, let me.
Screen share that? Yeah.
Yeah, let me let me screen share that. So can you all see that?
Yes.
Okay.
And can you enlarge that a little bit, Martha?
Uh, let me see. Hold on a sec.
Mm hmm. It might be the big box.
Down on the bottom, on the right.
Oh. This is going to make it really big. Oh, okay. Emily, I see what you're saying. My technology person here.
Beautiful.
Yep.
How's that less good?
Okay.
Thank you.
Town of Newbury Planning Board Public Hearing Notice. Residents of the Town of Newbury and other interested persons, please note that on Wednesday, June 17th, 2020, at 7:15 PM, the Newbury Planning Board will hold a public hearing at the Newbury Municipal Offices, 12 Kent Way, Byfield, Massachusetts, in the second floor hearing room to be held virtually via Zoom to consider an amendment to the Town of Newbury Site Plan Review Submission Requirements and Procedures to add provisions regarding preparation and submissions of record drawings upon completion of construction to meet year two MS four requirements. The text of the proposed amendments is on file with the town clerk and in the planning office, 12 Kent Way, Suite 101, Byfield, Massachusetts. And a copy may be requested by emailing The proposed amendments may also be viewed on the planning board section of the town's website. For more information, contact the town planner at 978-465-0862, extension 312. All persons interested or wishing to be heard relative to the to the proposed amendment should appear at the time and place designated above. Interested persons may watch the meeting live on local cable, Channel 9, and at www.tncTV.org or may participate in the meeting from their computer, tablet or smartphone at https call double I don't know, colon, double backslash US, um, zero two, backslash J83839871364 or by telephone by calling 19292056099 US and using meeting ID 83839871364. Peter Pecos, Chair, Newbury Planning Board. June 17th, 2020.
Right. And just to note, this was published in the Daily News on June 2nd and June 9th.
Okay.
Leslie, thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Okay, with that, this is regarding additions of provisions regarding recording drawings. Martha, do you want to start this off?
Um, sure, I'll just give a quick summary. You may recall that Julie O'Brien and John O'Connell appeared before the board in February to request this change. And it's a change that is required under the year two of our Nipte's permit, and I'll explain what that is. So under the Federal Clean Water Act, the Town of Newbury is required to comply with the rules of the Phase Two National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, Nipte's Stormwater Program. The town, the the Nipte's, the current Nipte's general permit, which is good for five years, actually became effective in July of 2018. So we're in year two now. And there are certain requirements that need to be met during year two. And I'm going to see if I can pull that up. You can just bear with me again for a second. So can you see that?
Yes.
Oops. All right. So some of the MS four year two and MS four stands for municipal small sewer system. And it is applicable to what's considered to be the urbanized areas of the town. So that includes Plum Island, some of Old Town around the the upper green and the Old Town Hall parts of Byfield. And so there are mapping requirements, identification of catch basins and outfalls, getting stormwater regulations in place and making amendments if they're not already in place to our site plan review and subdivision rules and regulations. And so that's the bullet point number four down here. We already have a requirement for record drawings in our subdivision rules and regs, and we need to add that requirement to the site plan submission requirements and procedures. So that is basically what this is all about. And if you'd like, I can pull that language up on the screen as well. It's up to you all.
Does anyone have an interest in seeing that language on the screen?
Uh, no, I don't think I want to. Maybe can you send this to us at a maybe tomorrow or later date?
Well, I think because of the timing, since this needs to be voted on before the end of the fiscal year, that it's not something, I think we need to close the public hearing tonight, if at all possible. It is something that I had sent previously. And what I can do is I can read it if that would be helpful.
Martha, correct me if I'm wrong. If this isn't adopted by the end of the fiscal year, the town can face fines from the federal government. Is that correct?
Uh, that that is correct. There may be some leniency based on COVID-19, but I think, again, it's something that we would, you know, John O'Connell would very much like to get in place, and it would be good to to get it in place. And we can pay, we can face, if we don't meet these requirements, we can face up to fines of up to $15,000 a day.
I don't think we want to do that.
Wow.
Thanks.
I, if I may, Pete, it might be a good idea just for other people who are, I know all the members of the board have seen this language. Might not be a bad idea to put it up on the screen for everyone else.
Sure, Martha, let's do that. Just for completeness. Thank you. Thanks, Larry.
And bear with me again for a second. I need to get. So can you see that?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right. So the proposed change is at the very end of the document, and it has to do with production of record drawings at the completion of a project that has been approved through the site plan review process. So basically, it just says upon completion of construction before release of full performance guarantee, the applicant shall have prepared and submitted record drawings, which will indicate the actual location of the following. So it's street lines, roadway edges, path locations, permanent monuments, locations and inverts of required utilities and drainage, location of any other underground utilities such as electricity, telephone lines and street lighting, locations such as rain gardens, constructed wetlands, detention ponds and similar facilities. And these must be stamped by a professional engineer retained by the applicant and approved by the planning board's agent. So that that's the only language that is proposed to be placed in the site plan review submission requirements and procedures.
While we have that language up, does anyone on the board have a question? I'll just kind of go through individuals. Larry?
No, I think it's very clear.
Great. George?
No.
Okay, Leslie?
No.
Woody?
No.
Okay, Mary?
No.
Okay, very good. I think we're good with the screen share. Thank you, Martha. Okay, that being the case, are there any questions from anyone in the audience regarding this?
I don't see any raised hands.
Okay. All right, that being the case, I would entertain direction in a motion.
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? On closing the public hearing, Larry, how do you vote?
Yes.
George, how do you vote?
Yes.
Larry, how, I mean, Leslie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
Great. Mary, how do you feel?
Yes.
Wonderful. And the vote and the chair also was in favor of closing.
So now the board needs to take a vote on whether to approve this.
I would move to approve the the amendment to the site plan review as presented by the town plan.
And that's in the form of a motion, great, and seconded. Any any discussion on the motion? I don't see any. Okay, on the motion, Larry, how would you vote?
Yes.
Great. George, how would you vote?
Yes.
Leslie, how would you vote?
Yes.
Woody, how would you vote?
Yes.
And Mary, how do you feel about that?
Ah, yes.
Wonderful. And the chair is also in support of this.
Well, thank you. I will let John and Julie know. I think. Well, thank you, I will let John and Julie know, I think they'll be very pleased, and so I'll get that incorporated into a revised version with a new date on it.
And for the, and for the record, the planning board appreciates the efforts of these individuals to, to achieve our standards. Thank you very much, John and Les, thank you. All right, continuing on our agenda, we're going to have a concurrent hearing, which will be opening a, a public hearing, 108 Main Street, which was postponed for May 20th, 2020. Leslie, I think you're going to have two comments to, to read, and Martha will put those up on the screen.
Thank you.
All right, so one is, there are two concurrent public hearings, one is for the definitive subdivision plan, and the other is for the common driveway special permit. So, I'll do the definitive plan first. Oops, sorry. I'm making you dizzy.
All right, I, let's see. All right, I'm missing a few words on the right-hand side.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, I'll, I'll take it back down a little bit. It's showing up differently on my screen than it is on yours. Is that better?
Little bit smaller.
Okay.
Just a tiny bit.
Oops, that's too much.
Well, let's see if we can get through it. Residents of the Town of Newbury, Planning Board Public Hearing Notice, Definitive Subdivision Plan. Residents of the Town of Newbury and other interested persons, please note that on Wednesday, April 15th, 2020, at 7:15 PM, the Newbury Planning Board will hold a public hearing in the second floor hearing room at the Newbury Municipal Offices, 12 Kent Way, Byfield, Massachusetts, 01922, to consider the application of Triple Q Inc. for approval of a definitive subdivision plan as shown on the drawings entitled Colletoni Crossing Newbury Subdivision, Main Street, Newbury, Mass., dated February 19th, 2020, prepared by ASB Design Group LLC for the Triple Q Inc. The proposed subdivision consists of five lots of approximately 8.2 acres of land located at 108 Main Street, assessor's map U 11, Lot 1A, and off Main Street assessor's map R 41, Lot 56, owned by Triple Q Inc. Copies of the plan and application are on file with the town clerk and the planning office, 12 Kent Way, Suite 101, Byfield, Massachusetts, and are available for review during regular business hours. For more information, contact the planning office at 978-465-0862, extension 312. All persons interested or wishing to be heard relative to the definitive subdivision plan, application should appear at the time and place designated above. Pete Pecos, Chair, Newbury Planning Board.
This was published on March 31st and April 6th.
All right, Mark, publish, yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
Wonderful, and do you want to read the second announcement at the same time, just so we can have our, our meeting flow?
Yes, I'm going to put that one up now.
Great.
So, I'm sorry. I'm not quite sure what happened there.
We can see that, Martha.
You can, all right.
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm missing part of the right hand side.
All right, I've I've done something strange on my, at my end here.
How about if I read this for you, Leslie?
Okay, because I, I am missing.
Yes, yeah, the technology, right. Okay, that's the difference between the Windows and the ISO, I think, the pads. A Town of Newbury Planning Board Public Hearing Notice, Common Driveway Special Permit. Residents of the Town of Newbury and other interested persons, please note, oops, please note that on Wednesday, April 15th, 2020, 7:15, the Newbury Planning Board will hold a public hearing in the second floor hearing room at the Newbury Municipal Offices, 12 Kent Way, Byfield, Mass., 01922, to consider the application of Triple Q Inc. for a common driveway special permit. The applicant requests a special permit for her common driveway to serve two lots, Lots Four and Five, as shown on definitive subdivision plan drawings entitled Colletoni Crossing's Newbury Subdivision, Main Street, Newbury, Mass., dated February 19th, 2020, and on the common driveway profile dated March 7th, 2020, prepared by ASB Design Group LLC for Triple Q Inc. for the land located at 108 Main Street, assessor's map U 11, Lot 1A, and off Main Street assessor's map R 41, Lot 56, owned by Triple Q Inc. Copies of the plan, driveway profile, and application are on file with the town clerk and the planning office at 12 Kent Way, Suite 101, Byfield, Mass., and are available for review during regular business hours. For more information, contact the planning office at 978-465-0862, extension 312. All persons interested or wish to be heard relative to the common driveway special permit application should appear at the time and place of the hearing designated above. Pete Pecos, Chair, Newbury Planning Board, this was published in the Newbury Daily News on the 31st of March and on the 7th of April, 2020. With that said.
May I, may I just add one thing?
Sure thing.
Because this, the opening was postponed twice, I sent a letter out to everyone on the Butters List on June 4th, 2020, basically telling them that it was this, the hearing was going to open tonight on the 17th, providing Zoom information and also information on accessing it on the cable TV and, and streaming live on tncTV.org.
Great, uh, thank you. Now that our public hearing is open, who would like to present to the board?
Good evening, John Colletoni from Triple Q Inc., the applicant. First of all, all right, to jump right in?
Sure.
Thank you. First off, we'd just like to thank the, uh, the board during these trying times to have a Zoom meeting and, uh, and keep things moving forward. We really appreciate it. Excited about showing what's been accomplished over the last few months. Also want to give a, just a huge thank you to Martha over the last few months, walking us through everything and, you know, the extra coronavirus stuff and everything, and the Zoom meeting, she's just been fantastic and really lucky to be able to work with her and get us through things. And then we also wanted to thank the neighbors, we, uh, Mark Simmons, we met at one of the meetings. One of the neighbors has been helpful to reach out to other neighbors, so we actually had scheduled the beginning of April a coffee at Mark's house, but then with the whole coronavirus thing, we actually did a neighbor Zoom meeting the first week or two of April, which was really great. And I also sent out a reminder to the people that were on that Zoom meeting about, uh, uh, tonight's Zoom meeting as, as well. And, uh, but again, a thank you to Mark and the, the neighbors, they've also been helpful with the input. So, I'd like to just quickly, uh, refresh everyone's, remember the last time we were with him, back in March, filing the paper.
John? John, I'm just going to interrupt you for a second. If you have another device that is linked to the Zoom meeting, we'll be getting feedback, and so it might be a little bit difficult to hear you clearly. So, if there's another device or a phone that's on a speaker, if you could just mute that, that would be helpful, thank you.
Oh, one second, I think I know what it is.
Okay, great. Our, our technology challenges that continue when we figure these things out as we go through these meetings. Sometimes if there's a laptop in the other room that's too close, it will create feedback or echoing, thanks, thanks, John, we'll try that now.
Is that better?
That does appear to be a little bit better, folks, is that clear?
Yes.
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 Great, thanks, John, I'm sorry for the interruption.
No, 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 thank you, I appreciate that. So, I just wanted to give a little, uh, quick on how this whole subdivision came about. We purchased the land which the town put together, two lots, at the auction back in September. And, again, they put two lots together, they actually did a zoning opinion, uh, which is unusual for an auction, which was great, that they thought it could be, didn't guarantee how many lots, but, uh, some type of subdivision. And they also even had perk testing that was already done, which again was unusual, so that was really nice. So, we bought it at the auction, um, and that's how the whole thing went from there. We originally thought that we would probably be able to do six lots, as what you see submitted is five. How it went down to five is we had, uh, some meetings, uh, ahead of time, uh, again with Martha, who was helpful, and Doug from Conservation, that was helpful. And from that, we determined what was possible and what's not, and that's how it went down to five lots. Also, before the submission of everything, we met with the fire department, uh, we met with the water commission, and we also talked to the, what I call Highway DPW Department, and we've also been dealing with, uh, national grid. Uh, and of course, I already mentioned that we had a Zoom meeting, uh, with the neighbors. So, what has been submitted has really been a combination of all those things. So, for instance, what the fire department wanted done has already been done. What Water Commission said has been taken care of, uh, Highway DPW been taken care of. So, we're sort of ahead of the game. Also, the last couple of months, when we've been waiting for the public hearing, Town of Newbury, again, been great with Martha, we've been able to, uh, work with the peer review engineer. So, there's already been two rounds of questions, uh, that have been answered, and we'll review that, uh, a little bit more later. I'm lucky to have on my, uh, my team, uh, over 60 years of experience, even though they're only 30 years old apiece, and that's Thad Berry, the engineer, and Bill Manuel, my, uh, wetlands expert, and I've worked with them before, and they're absolutely fantastic. So, I'm, I'm lucky to, uh, to have them. So, in a minute or two, I'll have them sort of take over. You're not going to be able to see them because they're going to be, um, sharing material and running the cursor, which I think is going to help a lot and everyone understand, uh, what we're doing. Just want to double check here. So, a question that does come up is on the name, Colletoni Crossing, uh, that is named after my father, who was a 25-year veteran, two years in the fleet, 23 years in the Air Force, uh, and the crossing part of it is with the wetlands. Our goal with this subdivision, uh, is to try to keep as much natural beauty out there as possible, which is much woods and not disturbing the wetlands to the best of our ability, and that's how the whole design with Bill and Thad has been going on, and that's, that's our goal. So, when I turn it over to, uh, Thad and Bill, in talking with Martha, we thought the first thing that would be nice to do is on the common driveway, uh, application, obviously, to be able to submit an application for a common driveway, you have to prove that it can be done conventionally with a driveway to each house. So, that's the first thing that Thad and Bill are going to touch upon, and then we'll get into, uh, what I call the overall subdivision, with drainage and things, and going through the peer review questions, which probably 80% of them have already been taken care of, which is great. And, uh, we'll spend more discussion on, on the ones that, uh, there is a difference of opinion on how to do it between the, the two engineers. So, with that, if there's any questions for me before I turn it over to, uh, Thad and Bill, I'll be glad to take them. Uh, I'm going to be joining Thad and Bill in the same room so I can work with them on the shared material, so he'd still be able to hear my voice at that time, but he won't be able to see my mugshot. So, if there's any questions on anything I've stated, I'd be glad to, to take them now.
Do I see any questions from any of the board members this time?
No.
Don't see any, so I think John will continue the conversation, so I would say hop in the other room with your other, other team members and we'll continue our discussion.
All right, thank you so.
Thank you, John.
All right, so I'm going to now make Bill Manuel, um, a host so that he can share his screen.
Thank you.
Just say when.
So, you should be ready now.
Okay.
Okay, Bill, I'm going to ask you if you can enlarge that just a touch, so folks can make out the, uh, you could, yeah, maybe a little bit smaller, I know this is going to be tough to negotiate. But I want all the board members to be able to see this without too much difficulty.
Yeah.
Bring the in-between.
It goes in increments, I think.
Right, right, okay. We can always expand if we need to, thank you, I'm sorry for the interruption.
Hello, my name is Thad Berry, and I'm going to review, uh, the concept here with the five lots with all separate driveways. And as you can see, uh, Lots Four and Five, we're basically showing that we can access both lots, uh, with separate driveways. Uh, early on, uh, we looked at that and felt that, uh, it might be better if we could approach it with a common driveway. One of our concerns with the common driveway, obviously, is, uh, meeting with the fire department and getting their concerns about being able to access the driveway, as well as also knowing when they're coming down that lane signage, uh, so that they know what, what lot they're turning to. Uh, we incorporated their concerns, uh, basically, we're going to have lights for the driveway, we're going to have signage, uh, specifically common driveway, uh, with a number, you know, the street of Colletoni Crossing. And then when you get up to the point where the common driveway separates to each lot, uh, Four and Five will also have numbers there directing them to each of the individual lots. So, really, the, the plan you're looking at now just shows what it would look like if we do do, uh, two separate driveways. We're able to do it and meet the performance standards under the Wetland Act, being under 5,000 square feet of wetland filling. Um, we, again, going back to our original thought process, we just felt it might be better if we could possibly do a common driveway, if that was acceptable to everybody. So, the plan we're looking at right now, um, shows Lot Four and Five, and shows the common driveway that we've laid out at the end of the cul-de-sac. So, as you can see, there are two, a common driveway comes in, and then the driveway splits. At that split, we're having a, a light, uh, obviously to illuminate the, the two driveways. We're also going to be putting signage, um, whatever the, uh, lot numbers or, um, street numbers for those two houses are, will be rated at those two at that split, so the fire department can clearly delineate which house they're going to. At the entrance to the common driveway, we're going to have the same type of signage, common driveways, and in this particular case, I'm going to call them Lot Four and Five. Um, and we also have a light, um, right before, a little bit before we do the wetland filling on the driveway, and, uh, requested by the fire department, we also have a light at the end of the cul-de-sac near the fire hydrant.
Any questions on the common driveway situation?
So, just for clarification for the board members, uh, the first depiction was to show, uh, the individual driveways, and this was to then validate the capacity to then make a common driveway.
Yes, the first, the first plan was to show that we could, we could do separate driveways and meet the performance standards under the Wilderness Protection Act. And the plan you're looking at now is the common driveway, uh, that we would like to obviously, uh, construct. And as you can see, we're basically really necking down that wetland impact by just going across it in one place. And we're, obviously, we, we picked the narrowest place between the two wetlands to, you know, to make the crossing.
Uh, we saw something, I think, from the building commissioner to the effect that the, uh, common driveway, uh, is not wide enough. Have you seen that?
Um, no, we met with the, um, fire department and the width of the fire, of the driveway, as what they were, the fire department requested. And then we also, at their request, uh, did an auto-return movement, we measured their fire truck. We measured their fire truck um, and we used their fire truck in order to do the turning movements across the um, the common driveway into the individual lots. We can make it wider if, if, if it's, if it's needed.
Martha, I know you sent this out and I'm not finding it. Do you have?
I, I did send it out. He was just noting that uh, per our common driveway requirements, the common driveway needs to be 16 feet wide.
That's what I'm referring to, yeah. So would that require a waiver then?
What's the, what? I don't know. I thought it was 16 feet.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure that he was saying that it's not. I think it was just, just a reminder that that's what it needs to be under, under our bylaw.
I actually think it's um.
We're just double checking the width right now because it's a little hard to see on the uh.
Yeah, I don't see.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I don't know why I can't find the piece of paper I'm looking at or read it, looking for.
But we'll give you an exact measurement right now.
Uh, the common driveway is 20 feet wide.
20, okay.
And again, I just, just as a note, it was basically coordinated with the fire department. What they felt was adequate for get their, their machine, their fire truck across.
Um, if I could ask, what is the width of the individual part of the driveways?
I think I made those, hold on, let me check. Yeah, I made those 14, 14 feet.
And what is the turnaround capacity at the end of the driveway for an emergency vehicle?
We drove the truck in to each of the, the lots. In other words, the fire truck goes over the common driveway and let's say it's driving down to lot four. It'll drive down to lot four, do whatever it needs to do and then back out. As it's backing out, it's going to be able to make that turn into lot five and then drive out forward. And it's basically the same thing. If it goes to lot five, it'll go in, you know, do whatever it has to do, back out and then be able to drive out forward um, to the road.
So what you're saying is that why, where the, the split is for the two driveways can handle the girth of the um, emergency vehicle is if they back up, they can turn to back into the other driveway. Okay.
Right. We set the curve at that, I guess we would call it the, I call it the, the split. We set that curve in order to meet the fire truck's turning movement.
So Leslie, I think just to, uh, I think I know where you're going with this. Basically a truck would come down that driveway. Uh, they wouldn't be able to turn around, of course, down by the house. They would have to back out, back up to the, that fork and then go out. So basically one, if I understand this right, there would be one vehicle in at a time? Or if two vehicles go in, they'd be right behind each other. Is that correct, Martha?
I believe, yes, I believe so.
So in the event of winter, uh, heavy winter storms, well, that would cause a reduction of the width of the driveways. What is your plan to how to handle that?
Well, I would assume that the drives, drivers would be plowed.
Okay.
Leslie, were you going with the question of where's snow going to be stacked?
Where's the, the, you know, uh, you, you can plow the driveway, but I mean, the um, snow has to be pushed back so that the entire uh, width of the driveway on both sides and at the intersection has to still be able to accommodate the emergency vehicles.
And, and I, um, again, um, I'm assuming that the homeowners will want their driveways cleared and accessible. And um, I, I, I don't particularly see the plowing of a driveway or the roadway as an issue preventing the fire truck from accessing the, the lots. I mean, it would be the same conditions if there were two separate driveways.
We, we agree 100% with you. If, if one of the homeowners decides not to plow the driveway and they're going to let the 12 inch snowstorm sit on their driveway, then a, a fire truck's not going to be able to go up the driveway. That, that, so we, we agree 100%. Has, has to be plowed properly.
So along.
There'd obviously be a homeowners association of some type or agreement that would, you know, accommodate, you know, the plowing.
Okay. So actually you're, you're, you're entering a very good conversation point here. But before we get to the homeowners association, what would, what is the length of the driveway to get to the house on lot four?
Um, let's see, 120.
From the cul, from the cul-de-sac or from the floor?
Uh, from the cul-de-sac.
Thank you.
120 plus 180.
300.
Okay. And then you started, you started to mention that the, this would be a homeowners association. So this would be a. This would be a.
These two homes, because of the common driveway, would have some type of arrangement, and I may say this wrong legally, but in their deeds of some type of joint homeowners association for plowing or anything that has to do with the joint driveway. I don't want to be misleading. This is not a homeowners association, five unit subdivision. That these are individual, single family homes. The only reason that we're talking about any type of homeowners association is for these two homes with the common driveway area for plowing or things of that sort.
Right, because.
Maintenance.
Okay. So the intention then is that the, the way coming into with the cul-de-sac, is that, is your intention that that be a private road?
No, the, 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 the street that we're building here would be a town road.
Yeah, that's what we were, that's what we were thinking, a town accepted road.
That, that, that's why we were trying to be proactive in meeting with everyone that we did to meet all the standards that the different departments would want.
So the town would only be responsible up to the cul-de-sac? And then the homeowners would be responsible from the point from the cul-de-sac to the split?
Yes. I mean, obviously there would be a, a mutual obligation to the split, but then they would, they'll obviously be obligated to do their own driveways as well as individuals.
But you're correcting your question that the town would not be responsible for taking care of any of the driveways, not the common one or any others.
Okay, could we get uh, now kind of show the entire uh, proposed uh, so we can, everybody can get a feel of lots one through five and how this lays out?
Sure. Can you go first? Shrink down for a minute? Yeah.
So this would be coming off Main Street, folks?
Yes.
What's the distance uh, off of Main Street until it reaches the first uh, structure?
You mean the first, the first house?
Lot one, you know.
Lot one, say 325 feet.
Okay.
And the end of the cul-de-sac?
Uh, 800.
So Martha?
Yeah. So that's, that's a, that's a waiver request since 500 is our, our maximum.
All right. So continue with your presentation, please.
Um, so early on, um, Bill, myself and John um, sat down and kind of looked at the site as a whole and what was to be the best way to obviously develop it, minimizing such things as cuts and fills, impacts to trees. Um, we obviously did soil testing for septic systems. We also did soil testing for the stormwater management systems. Um, and then we obviously, we looked at the stormwater design uh, standards for mass DEP. And uh, one of the first things that they request that you do or consider is whether you uh, are going to use low impact development techniques. Um, in this particular site, we made use of low impact development in two uh, particular ways. We're using um, grass channels to convey the stormwater runoff generated from the paved roadway. From there, we created eight small um, wetland treatment areas. Um, so that we're basically dispersing the flow uh, over eight different BNP's, which allows that to minimize concentrated flow and to improve the water quality treatment from the runoff going to each of the smaller uh, BNP's. Now specifically, there is a point, one of the first things you read when you go into the stormwater regulations is there's an excerpt there that I've provided you uh, with a second response that basically requests, or not requests, but would like to see the designer try to achieve this type of, of, of system. Um, because again, it, it, it minimizes um, the concentrated flow and improves water quality and also stormwater infiltration. If you do use these methods, DEP says, okay, if you do do this, we'll be, we'll give you a credit. We'll allow you to um, not have to infiltrate as much. In this particular design, we're not looking for a credit. We're just looking to basically use the technique that DEP prefers us to use, which we know is a better way of doing it and which is one of the reasons we approached it this way. We also met with um, the Doug, the conservation officer to review this with him, specifically addressing things of how we're going to vegetate these areas, how we want these areas to blend into the adjacent wetlands. So that when you're coming down the road, you're not seeing these holes in the ground. Um, that, you know, typical, you know, detention, retention basins areas. And that's where Bill and Doug had came up with some planting schemes that we both think uh, are, are nice, that we're going to end up blending into the existing wetlands. And um, and basically that was our overall approach um, in designing the, you know, the, the drainage system. We feel it's a, you know, it's a good design and it's um, it will uh, more than adequately provide the necessary stormwater uh, water quality treatment plus the mitigation for P and, P and P's peak flows.
Any questions on that? Now we could go to the individual questions that peer review brought up and quickly go through that one by one, where about 80% of them have already been taken care of. Uh, I asked that through the chair, if that's how you'd like us to proceed?
Um, well, I'll, I'll tell you, I think the uh, board would disseminate the information. Uh, this is the first time they're seeing the plan. So I, they will probably want to uh, now that they've had the plan visualized, uh, look at the information that's been supplied and then kind of ponder those. Now, the uh, questions that are still um, of concern or where there appears to be a little bit of a difference of opinion, I think that those conversations probably should be uh, had um, a little bit further with peer review and with your engineer. And that after the conclusion of those discussions, I think that might be helpful to then come back uh, to the board to, to kind of let us know what that discussion uh, has led to. Does that sound appropriate, Martha?
Uh, I think, I think there should be discussion because we'll need to make sure that, that there's a meeting of the minds and that, that Joe is comfortable with.
So, yeah, so rather than have the applicant to tell us their position right now and us to say, to, you know, to, to, to digest that, I think it's, it's best for the, the, the individuals that are, that are of this mindset to, to, to come to an uh, resolution and then present it to the board. Um, I think that makes the most sense. So there should be more discussions. I would support Martha's uh, statement on that. Other board members, what I'd, I'd like to hear from you.
Yeah, there's a few more things as far as I'm concerned to uh, like you said, digest. Um, I'd like in, even though, thank you very much for presenting the uh, information and the maps, but it's still a little bit on the difficult side to uh, appreciate all the information that uh, is there because it's in such a small view. Uh, so yeah, I would uh, I would appreciate a little more time to um, understand the layout and the plan a little bit uh, more in depth.
Uh, Larry, any, any thoughts or comments at this point?
Just a couple, a couple of things. Um, just for the record, I went and I found that email about the width of the common driveway and it's over too much old. So I'm not sure that that's uh, that that's a concern anymore. I don't know. Um, there is uh, among the other things that, that issues that have been raised is the um, burden that this is going to put on the DPW for maintenance of this, if it's accepted as a um, as a public way. So I, I think that needs some work to, and uh, at some point, uh, we're going to need to hear the justification for the waivers as well. Not saying it has to be tonight, but uh, you know, I think that's an important component here.
Thanks, Larry.
Could you repeat, could you repeat that?
Uh, what, which part?
Concern. It was a little odd to hear at the end.
Oh, sorry. Um, yeah, some concern has been raised on, on the burden that this might put on DPW to uh, maintain all these CMTs if it's uh, accepted as a public way. Uh, there's also the issue of uh, a turning radius too, that I think needs to be addressed. There are a number of things that, I mean, you could go over those with us right now, but frankly, would just defer them to our peer review engineer anyway, I think. Um, and lastly, I said, uh, you know, at, at some point, we're going to need to discuss the justification for the requested waivers.
Uh, George, did you want to comment on anything at this point?
Uh, yes, I do. Where is the nearest hydrant to lot number four, the dwelling there?
And yet we have a hydrant at the end of the cul-de-sac.
Okay, all right.
Um, so it's, if you, it's right at the end. Uh, again, it was this, the location of the hydrants, and there are two on the site, were coordinated with the fire department.
Good, all right. Uh, Martha, do we have any uh, documentation yet from the fire chief that he's pleased with the site? I'm, I'm concerned about the width of the driveways, particularly in the length for backing a fire engine out to let another one come in for whatever purpose it may be.
Uh, I have not received anything from him in writing.
Yeah, I think we need that uh, saying that he's given it a thorough review and that he is happy or unhappy about certain things.
As it relates to the common driveway, uh, George in specific?
Yes, in particular.
Okay, okay. Um, Woody, do you, anything else, George?
No.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Woody, do you have any thoughts at this introductory point?
No, not at this time. Um, I, I do think that that's, the common driveway is a concern. And other than that, no.
Uh, Mary, do you have any thoughts or concerns at this point?
Where's the other hydrant? On the side, where's the other one?
The hydrant is right, the bend of the road at lot two.
Right. So you said there were two?
Yes, one, and there's one at the end of the cul-de-sac.
Okay, gotcha. All right, thank you.
If, if I may, I will say that uh, I do trust the chief as an approval of all of this. Because the, the common driveway to lot four, that's, I believe that's over 300 feet to the hydrant. That's, if that's all right, then that's fine with the chief, then that would be fine.
Um, and could you uh, kind of now make the uh, image a little bit smaller just so we can? And could you kind of now make the image a little bit smaller, just so we can take, we can see lots of four and five with the common drive? Beautiful, thank you. So, a couple of questions. Are these three, four-bedroom homes, is that what's kind of being looked at?
We designed the septic system for four-bedroom homes, but keep in mind that the four-bedroom home, in terms of Title V, is kind of an odd way of doing it. But they count a lot of rooms that may not be a bedroom as a, as a bedroom, so I'm giving, I, in order to get a room count, I use the four bedrooms.
Okay, at that. And as I'm looking at lot four, lot five, the, looks like the leaching field on four is to the, if I have my trajectory right, east and south end of that lot, that's right there, okay, beautiful. And on five, it's to the north, yep, okay. So, okay, okay. All right, and the green barrier, that represents introduction into...
That's the tree, that's the tree line that we want to preserve.
Okay.
So anything inside of that tree line is obviously disturbed, either via grading house, or, or, yeah, we have an area, Joe, that might be more helpful to you.
And as you, yeah, as you're pulling that up, if you could just help us also appreciate the elevational changes in lot four and five from the start of the common driveway, if there is a significant elevational change or not, from where the house is to where the driveway begins.
See, we're at, this is about 70 and five. Yeah, about 70 and five, and it's 80, or, no, take that back, I want to say that's like 76 on lot four, and the driveway...
65 and seven.
Yeah, 65, it's at the cul-de-sac.
So about a 10-foot elevation. 65 with the drive and 75 with the homes.
Well, yeah, I have the, the houses are stepped, so the garages are actually lower. In other words, the garage is actually, you have the garage, and it steps up, reads way there, steps up to the house.
Okay, okay. Okay, I'm just looking for the, for the base of the house where it would be. And would there be any consideration to sprinkling these homes? Would you consider that in your design plan?
No, we didn't, we didn't, we didn't think about sprinkler systems, no.
And, and again, the reason that we didn't is, and I want to address a couple of things that were said, we met with the fire department, the fire chief, so everything that you see here was based on what he wanted in regard to where the fire hydrants are, where he wanted the lights for the fire hydrant. He knew about the shared, you know, the common driveway. So, the turnaround radius, he's the one that wanted no center part of the cul-de-sac that had to be flat. So, you know, I kind of tell how it is, we can't do anything more with the fire department. We've designed it based on what we were told, and I think, and I could be wrong, because it's been some time in between, but before we submitted this and met with the fire department, Martha, I think the fire chief called you, didn't he? And said that it, he had looked at it? Am I wrong in saying that?
I know he said that he had looked at it, but again, we haven't received anything in, in writing from, from him, sort of confirming that in fact.
So just to the board from the chair, if the fire department wants us to change anything, or add or subtract, or whatever, we're more than willing to look at that. But as of right now, there's nothing for us more to do with that. I also want to address the peer review situation. As you know, we got a big review by Joe, the peer reviewer, we answered all those, he came back with another one, and we've answered all those. So when he comes back with the answers on that, we, we might find some common ground, but as I'm sure the board is aware, when you have two engineers, sometimes it's, you know, more than one way to solve a problem. And I want to stress that we're trying to design this to keep the woods, the wetlands, like, we're trying to keep that all natural. And that's how our drainage systems are set up. We could, in a snap of a finger, do it the other way, but it's, it's going to take away and not leave as much beauty. So what Bill is trying to put up on the screen for you is, we literally just received this email from our color rendering computer person that does some of these things, and this gives you a rough idea of what the aerial view would be when the five houses would be built. Is that up there now, Bill?
It is.
Is everyone able to see that?
Yes.
Thank you.
So, I don't want to say that it's 100% perfect, but it sort of gives you an idea of how much wood area and everything that we're, we're trying to keep. Also, as Ted mentioned, you know, these houses are designed for four-bedroom septic systems and all that. In a small subdivision like this, probably what's going to happen is the lots would be sold, but we're going to have a contract to build, because it's too small, the subdivision, to let anyone else build, so we would build them. So it's quite possible that the footprint of these homes that we're showing might not even be as big, because obviously, on the approval of them, we're trying to show you that the biggest impact, for lack of better terms, it could have, but it's quite possible that they wanted three-bedroom house built, or don't want a full garage, so just, just keep that in mind.
And I want to point out, the aerial that you're looking at is taking from, it's taken from MAS GIS, which basically MAS GIS obviously shows the roadways and the existing trees. And what you're able to do with that is she takes the CAD file, my CAD file, and then using the same scale, is able to position that design on the property. So what you're actually seeing is what it's going to actually look like in terms of what we're attempting to do, which is basically to preserve as much of the trees as we possibly can. Now, the other thing is about, you know, the maintenance of these BNP's. The BNP's themselves, the smaller BNP's, one of the reasons DEP stresses this, or they, they hope that people do this, is that they require less maintenance. It's their drainage swells that are able to infiltrate the flow and go to smaller areas, taking less type of pollutants, take for instance, suspended solids and so forth. You know, the best way I can explain this to you is that, if I were to say to all of you that I'm going to design a roadway system, and I'm going to bring all of the peak hour traffic, similar to what happens in Boston at 93, to the same point, at say, 7 o'clock in the morning, you'd kind of probably look at me and say, that's probably not a particularly good idea. But if I were to say to you, I'm going to take that traffic, and I'm going to put some people on buses, I'm going to have some people take the train, I'm going to have some people stagger out, leave at 10 o'clock in the morning instead of 8:00. In other words, I'm dispersing all of that traffic, all of that flow, and that's basically what the goal is of low-impact design, is to basically disperse the flow, keep it small, and keep it such that it's not getting concentrated in large, large peak flows. You know, some of these flows aren't even, I would call it real, they're like 0.1 cubic feet per second in the 100-year storm. And that's what our goal would be, is to keep the flows that small.
Again, I think, you know, it's, it's helpful to have the engineers come to a common meeting ground through more discussion. I think some of the questions that you were hearing from us, they're kind of public safety sort of things, because we've looked at long driveways, and we have concerns with long driveways that only allow a single piece of apparatus into, into a situation. So I understand that you have had some discussions with chief, fire chief, and in some other proposals, we've had, you know, suggestions of, you know, for homes that do have long driveways that have limited access, that might want to just take other things into consideration from the safety standpoint, that's why the question was asked most.
Mr. Chair, when we have the sky view up, I just want Bill to run the cursor, because, you know, as we move forward with this, if the board would like to see us do five separate driveways, we could do that, but where Bill is running the cursor right now, that's roughly where another driveway would go, and we'd do away with that common driveway. But you can see, we'd still have to have a driveway going to the other house, so we'd be wiping out quite a bit of trees and woods that we don't have to by utilizing the common driveway. So I just wanted to point that out.
Sure. John, we're not telling you to go option A, option B, we're just asking a question, because that's part of our responsibilities to ask those questions. And please don't take offense with the questions, you know, because it's part of the vetting process. So we appreciate, you know, all these energies, it's, you know, it's wonderful to see depictions like this, and we appreciate the concern of maintaining as much of the current environment as there is with this proposal.
Thank you.
I may have missed this, but I just want to get a sense of your thinking about going from six to five. Again, was this about the green space and you went?
It had to do with the minimum amount of contiguous uplands that a lot can have. So you have to have a certain amount of contiguous upland, not wetlands. And we couldn't, we couldn't configure the lots and meet that, so we had to get rid of that a lot.
All right. And Martha was very helpful in, you know, digging into that situation, you know, to help us figure that out.
Okay. All right, thanks, guys.
So, Martha, do you have any concerns at this point in time, or any questions or things that you'd like to have at this introductory case?
Well, I guess one question I have, going back to Larry's comment, I'm just wondering whether it might be beneficial at this point to go through the list of waivers and the justification, so that the board can, can think about it. Other than that, I think it's important to circle back to both the fire chief, and also I'd like to circle back to, to the DPW director, just to make sure that their concerns have in fact been reflected here.
Okay, so why don't we go through those waivers that are being asked for, just so that we can kind of have those in front of us while we have the plan? And if you want to maybe go back to the previous drawing, our previous image, that might, it might be helpful. Okay, great.
So, the first one would be, the roadway comes out, intersects Main Street, and we're looking for a waiver on the 30-foot radius. It would be on the northerly side of that, that road where he's got the cursor. The reason we're doing that is that it would impact the number of lots, in the sense that we couldn't get the contiguous upland for lot one, and then by coming in, bringing it all the way over where we could get the radius and make it work, we'd end up having to do more cutting of an existing knoll, and more tree clearing and so forth for the roadway. The next one, obviously, is the length of cul-de-sac, is 500, and we are looking for 810. We need the footage in the roadway, obviously, to generate the five lots. And then you do have a requirement for the cul-de-sac with a 120-foot diameter radius, I mean diameter, and we're, we're doing a fully paved 100-foot with no center island. And the last one would be the drainage pipe. Due to the difficulty with cover and so forth, we went with an 8-inch diameter pipe in 12-inch, instead of a 12-inch. We did have a conversation with the DPW person, and you didn't see it have an issue with the 8-inch, you understood what we were trying to do with the minimum amount of cover.
So, are there any other questions right now from any board members? I'm just going to kind of run down. Larry, do you have anything at this point?
I'm sorry, I had, I was interrupted. So what was the, in terms of the diameter of the drain pipe and the environmental analysis, what was that?
It was, it was, we are using 8-inch pipe, and the minimum size pipe in the regulation is 12.
So why not use 12?
Cover. The length, we're dealing with a situation with, to get at the flow and keep cover on the pipe, we had to, we had to go down to 8 inches.
DPW has no problem.
Yeah, we, you know, we went, when we talked to the DPW director, he had looked at that, and he understood what we're trying to do, and didn't have an issue with it.
And the environmental analysis?
What do you mean, what do you mean by the environmental analysis?
You're looking for a waiver of, what, section 11718C?
What specifically is...
Request a waiver, environmental analysis, subdivision's five lots. This is from your plan.
Yeah, we're just looking for the required environmental impact statement.
Yeah.
And the, the work that we have provided, between the NOI and the project data report, covers the majority of that information, was wetland impact, traffic, and so forth.
Let me check that with Doug.
Yeah.
Larry, are you comfortable with those?
Yeah.
Okay, great. George, do you have any concerns at this point in time?
Yeah, just for the idea that the piping will be 8 inches instead of 12 as required. Again, that's something that the DPW director ought to provide a letter to Martha, saying essentially, he's reviewed the plan and discussed it with the developer, and he has no problems with what is being done. Same with the fire chief. The letter can be that simple, but I think part of the responsibility of the planning board is to obtain that documentation for the file, so it points out it was asked in the future. Somebody can look at it 10 years from now and say, yeah, it was asked for.
Thank you.
That's really a question from Martha.
Yeah, no, I'm going to follow up on both of those, and get something in writing for the record. Or if there are any concerns, get, get those, so we can pass it on to the applicant.
Thank you, George. Leslie, do you have any questions or concerns at this point in time?
Nothing at this point in time. I'd like to do a little bit more review on it before I make any, have any additional questions.
Understandable, thank you. Woody, do you have anything at this point in time?
Nope, I don't. No, I'm good for now.
Okay, great. And Mary, do you have any, anything?
No, I'm fine, thank you.
Okay, great. And Martha, you're all set at this juncture?
At this point, yes.
Okay, great. So I think what I'd like to do at this point in time, if there's anyone from the community butters that would like, or other concerned individuals from our community that would like to ask questions, I'd ask that they notify us, either by waving, hand raise, or doing the star, is it star nine on their phone?
It's star nine, so I think in order to see the participants, Bill, you're going to have to stop screen sharing.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't, do you have any raised hands at all, Martha?
I'm not seeing any here.
Okay, and I don't see any hands going up on the screen anywhere. Okay, all right. All right, so it's, looks like we're probably going to have to have further discussions with this. So, that being the case, I think it probably would make very good sense to continue our discussion with regards to the... So, that being... Sorry?
Would you like a motion?
I was going to ask Martha first as to what our calendar looked like so that we could tie our date in with your motion.
Right. So I did send that to you at the end of the afternoon. I don't know if you had a chance to see it. But the upcoming, upcoming things that we have on the calendar right now. The July 1st meeting, we've got two hearings scheduled for 7:15, both of which have been continued several times. One is the 68 Green Street definitive subdivision plan. And that's one where the Jackmans had requested that we continue until the hearing can be held in person. We don't know what's going to be happening on July 1st. So I was going to touch base with them to see what their preference would be, whether to hold it that night or continue. The other one that we have is Newbury Self-Storage. Following that, on July 15th, we have the Golf Center currently scheduled. Following the election, the selectmen's portion of that here in the special permit is going to have to be renoticed. So there's time to do that for the 15th, but we'll need to have that discussion.
So we could potentially continue this to the 15th? Is that what I'm kind of hearing?
Possibly, unless you want to try, try for adding a third one to July 1st.
Any?
Mr. Chair, we would have no problem with July 1st. That would, actually, we're just looking at our calendars and July 1st works better for calendars than July 15th, if that's possible, sir.
Okay, great. Board members, feeling, you know, understanding that we're negotiating public hearings and Zoom platform. So I don't want us to get too congested and I don't want us to get stagnant either, so.
My only concern would be, you know, that that gives them sufficient time to have some further discussion with the peer review engineer and anybody else who needs to talk to them.
Yeah, me too.
Two weeks, two weeks from now, so.
And Larry, do you, are you feeling that that would be enough time or that would not be enough?
I mean, actually, I'd defer to the developer on that. If he thinks, if they think that that's going to, you know, they have enough time to get done what they need to get done, fine. The question was really posed to them, not to.
Gotcha.
To answer the question, and we appreciate that, because sometimes things can be cramped. But we would have no problem with July 1st, only because the second round of peer review is, you know, already been, you know, answered. If they weren't already answered, that would be a different situation. But they have. So we, we have no problem with July 1st and would rather prefer it.
That being the case, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to continue 108 Main Street public hearing until July 1st.
Okay.
And that would be at 7:15. We're scheduling them all for the same time and just in order.
Is there any further discussion on the motion? Okay, then we will go into a roll call. Larry?
Yes.
Okay, George?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Woody?
Yes.
And Mary, your opinion?
Yes.
And the board would be in favor as well? Okay, so we will continue this hearing for the 1st of July. Guys, thank you very much for your presentation. We appreciate your time and patience.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's see where we're at. Onto our agenda, I think we are now into old business. Is that correct, Martha?
That's correct.
Yes. In its review of the planning board, common letter for ZBA regarding Village Cricket Lane 40B application. Is it, Martha, can you screen share that draft?
I should be able to. Let me, let me try to do that here.
And everyone, I know this draft came out. We had, had been working on a draft before. Martha and I had an opportunity to, to kind of go through a couple of things this morning. And I think those kind of things popped up, they'd be on with a red bar on the side, which would be, I think, something that went out this afternoon. The first paragraph is just basically pulls in our language that helps guide the, the reason for the recommendations being public safety and concern. So that was, that addition, and the folks had an opportunity to look at that. And then continuing down, we had a second addition and this was. Martha.
It's down here. The addition, just with only one means of access and egress via Pearson Drive. The concern is that the length of the cul-de-sac will be compounded in an emergency situation, which necessitates deployment of multiple emergency vehicles to the site.
Okay, and then the third recommendation, I apologize, I, yeah, thanks.
Yeah, it was, it was addition of some languages sort of emphasizing that with no public transportation, it will be automobile dependent and will substantially increase the traffic load on Pearson Drive. And then goes in to talk about the, the traffic trips. And going down, there was a little language added to the recommendation for additional water pressure tests at the hydrant, recommending that multiple additional tests be done at at times of peak water demand to ensure that adequate water pressure is provided for firefighting. There's only one test that was done in 2017 included in the application. Under item four, there was addition of some languages noting that Martin Burns is actively used for hunting. And and then, let's see, there was, I think, a little, little tweaking of the language about site control and the fact that the developer does not seem to own the property, but there are two purchase and sale agreements which appear to have been expired unless they've been extended or unless a sale has taken place. So those were, those were the additions to the language that was sent to you yesterday.
Does anyone have any thoughts or any discussion regarding this draft?
I have a question. While the application states that the developer is also the owner of property, that does not appear to be the case. I know you just said something about, but.
Right.
Just fill me in on that quickly.
So that seems to be a discrepancy in the, in the application.
Right. That's huge.
So it may be something that's already been addressed. I haven't seen that. So I'm just going to, when the letter goes to the ZBA via Susan, I'm just going to flag that.
Okay.
My question is, so they're going to test the hydrant at the beginning of Pearson to see what the water pressure is. Are they planning to bring additional hydrants down to, through Pearson and into the new development?
There are a number of hydrants there. I think the one they tested is the one that's closest to the site. Which is essentially almost at the end of, end of the loop. It looks like, looking at the water supply line, it, it's a complete loop that goes into Pearson Drive and comes back out again. But that certainly would be a far end of the line.
Thank you.
George or Larry or Woody?
No, I think the, the letter is very comprehensive and it's excellent.
Very good. I have nothing at this time.
All right, Martha, thank you for compiling and being diligent with this, this draft and putting this together. And I think that we will go forward.
Okay, thank you. Do you want, do you want to take a vote on it or just sense of the board that this is it?
I will yield my co-chair.
Yeah, I would move approval and that we authorize the chair to sign and the matter, the letter be transmitted to the ZBA.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, on the motion, I'll do a roll call. Larry?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Woody?
Yes.
And Mary, how do you feel?
Yes.
Great. And the chairs and support as well. Thank you. Thank you, Martha.
Thank you. Thanks, Martha. Thank you.
Okay, new business. I see the word none next to that, so I'm very comfortable with that word.
If I may, the only question would be whether we want to look at schedules for the two new applications that we've received, scheduling those hearings.
Okay, so let's, let's, let's have that discussion. Go ahead, Martha.
Well, the two, as I noted when I sent out the calendar, the two, the two applications that were submitted during, during our lockdown were the 105 High Road OSRD special permit application. And the other one is the 23 Central Street AL Prime gas station application. So the second one, I think we're, we're still, I'm waiting to get an estimate or finalize an estimate from Joe for peer review. And we're also, I've sent it over to town council for any input on her. And, and with the thought that town council might join us for those public hearings, I'd like to consult with her on her schedule, I think, before the board determines anything.
Right. So if I'm picking up, what we probably want to do is 105, which has been kind of in our pipeline, but in a whole pattern because of our public hearing situation, that we probably want to look at bringing that onto the table. Okay, so understanding folks that we have a couple of things are already in the works. We have three meetings, three hearings on the first, if my memory does correct. And we have one currently on the 15th, Martha.
Currently, and that's the Golf Center. As I said, that will need to be renoticed, at least on the part of the selectmen. It may make sense to renotice on the part of the planning board as well, so that everybody can participate. And I guess the question then will be whether, whether it stays on the 15th or another date is chosen. But that is the only thing that's scheduled currently for the 15th.
And then we would have to check with the board of selectmen as to whether that date is also a comfortable date for them.
Right, especially now that they have a new member.
So I, I think we could maybe entertain introducing the summer to the 15th, would that make sense to our schedule, Martha?
I think it would work. I mean, even, even if the discussion is limited to perhaps a presentation or something, we could at least get it, get it going.
Okay, all right. Do I, any discussion from any board members on that?
The only question I have, Peter, is any plan during the summer to have a break in the meetings?
Oh, George, we were actually thinking of adding meetings.
Right.
Talking about a couple of meetings. You've done that in the past, although it sounds like we could be running right through the summer at full load, so. That's a question for the chair.
Yeah, so the, I think there, what we're trying to do is trying to get things back into some form of motion since we were kind of in a holding pattern for a couple of months. I think that the intention is to try to do this gradually. We are still in the state of emergency. And we find that it's difficult to actually physically, our first hearing that we, our hearing that we had earlier today was went well because the applicant has done some discussion with the butters and neighbors. And hopefully that discussion is, is constructive. So that made tonight's hearing pretty seamless. Going forward, we might have a situation where we have more discussion from butters or concerned parties, and it might be just a little bit more technically difficult to negotiate. So I want to make sure that we're keeping our, our level manageable. And if we don't know what's going to happen on the 15th with the Golf Center, it might make sense just to restart this and see if we can maintain two meetings. And if the board feels that they want to go to one meeting for a month or two, we can have that discussion. I have no, no problem with.
Right.
Okay. Any sense as to somebody wanting to make a recommendation?
Much to do with Jen?
No, no, we're not there yet. We're not there yet, Woody.
Nice try.
Pete, I lost, I lost the thread. You want a recommendation as to when to schedule these?
Yes, at least.
Chasing butterflies. What would this suggest the date?
So butterfly date net number one was the 15th to start the high road.
That, that, that would seem reasonable. You want a motion or just?
Why not?
All right, I moved. Are we doing on the 15th?
Second.
Wonderful. I'm going to stay away from that word because I use it a lot in the last meeting. I killed it.
What's that?
The word wonderful.
I like it.
And again, at 7:15.
Yes. There's a motion, there's a second, any discussion on the motion? Roll call vote. Larry?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Woody?
Yes.
And Mary, how do you feel?
Yes.
I almost said it again, and the chair's in favor. Thank you. Okay, so moving, continuing our agenda, Martha, we have nothing further on a town plan as a report?
Not at this time, no.
Okay, great. Leslie, thank you. I think you did the board of selectmen. Is there a ZBA?
Yeah, about Cricket Lane. It's, I don't know at this point if it's going to go forward on the 25th. I saw an email today from the developer requesting a continuance. And that was forwarded to the chair and I don't know what the, you know, how that's going to be handled. So there may be a further continuance of that manner. The 40B.
Thank you. Concon met last night via Zoom. We have new agent, Bill Holt, and we have new chair. And we had a couple of items of agenda, public hearing, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, which resulted in two-site business, which will take place on Monday. There was an approval for a deck. There was also an approval for, for the 131 Newbury Turnpike with Di Francesco. And there was approval for 145th Street Construction of the door. Certificates of compliance, a couple were approved and a couple were put on hold. So that was that. And recognition to Doug Packard for his many, many years of service to the town and to conservation. And he'll be retiring the end of this month.
So this was his last hearing?
This was his last hearing. And, yeah, so we, new administrative, new agent, new chair.
Yeah, sorry, I couldn't attend last night. I, I was caught up in the election.
It's okay. It's all good. That's all good. MBPC, Martha?
MBPC, we're, the commissioners' meeting is actually scheduled for tomorrow. And the selectmen did approve the recommendation that I be reappointed as a commissioner and that Larry be appointed as the alternate commissioner for FY '21. The biweekly planners' meetings have been continuing. A lot of it has, again, been focused on economic issues, reopening businesses. The last discussion was primarily about the restaurants and getting applications in for restaurants, being able to serve outside and liquor licenses and that kind of stuff.
Good. And I know they're continuing. I think I saw something. So Larry, you'll be getting on their mailing, their email?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, so I will, I will let them know about the appointments and give them Larry's email address.
You're supposed to get a a, what's it called? A vest?
A vest.
I'm still waiting. So if you get a vest that doesn't fit, toss it over my way and then we can talk about getting it.
It's just getting better and better. No.
You know? The perks, the perks. Okay, I, the last item on the agenda I see at 8:45 was meeting minutes.
Yeah, and I'm so sorry. It just didn't, didn't happen.
That's okay. All things considered, let's see, we are at 8:54, if I have this correctly, 8:53. And I don't see any other business for us to talk about this evening, folks. That being said, Woody?
Want to adjourn?
Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait, Woody?
Oh, yeah, Woody.
Yeah, I was just being a smart act, but motion to adjourn.
Oh, there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Any discussion on the motion? I don't see any discussion. Larry, how say you?
Say yes.
And George?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Woody?
Yes, please.
Mary?
Yes.
Okay, and the chair is also in favor. Thank you very much, everyone. Appreciate your continued support and diligence through these difficult times and all your understanding with our technology.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you.